Should we just do it?
Sure.
All right, folks, Commissioner Pavlik is gone on a medical. Commissioner Skoye is hopefully in route. But to keep some kind of schedule, I will call the KDA Board to order. And we'll hold off on the Pledge of Aegis. We'll do that when we start the County Board meeting. We'll just start with KDA. First order of business for KDA would be to approve the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda this evening?
We know there is, Mr. Chair.
I move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Norby to approve the KDA agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Minutes from the seemingly ninth, regular meeting of the KDA Board.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Norby?
I guess I'll second.
Commissioner Adi? Discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have financials. Approved the May claim payments listing. And what do we have, Jen? Do we have the ones coming out?
Yes.
The $20,000 to Northland Counseling?
That's correct. We have second half budget allocations.
And that was approved last month, KDA.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the...
I think there's some more. The Commissioner is going to pay them all and the allocations to the cities and KCDA Airport and the nursing grant after July 1st. Mr. A and B?
I'll move to approve.
You want to do the calling report separately?
Yeah, we'll do the calling report. So you want to pay the bills?
Yeah.
Moved by Commissioner Adi to pay bills payable for KDA.
Second.
All right, discussion. I have a question on the Ring River Community College nursing grant, Jen. Is that?
That will be...
Is that our second payment?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that will be big in July.
July, and so that would be for the 2017-18 school year?
That's correct. And as a side note, I checked with them and they've got very good enrollment. I think they're almost full. Is that right, Mr.?
That's whatever, too. They have really good enrollment. I forget the number, but I think it was a pretty good sized number.
So I was glad to hear that.
Okay. All right, helpful questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Financial report? Looks like... Let's see what we have. We have fund balance. Is that after these payments? $120,008.07? Or is that...
That's correct. And the reason why that fund balance is a little bit higher is because we have outstanding invoices that we cannot get the Department of Energy to...
Yep.
...pay us and then we have to pay the...
Commissioner Adi and I both approved those, but...
Yes.
For some reason, Department of Energy has not come forward with the last payments.
What is that?
I don't know.
They think that there's been a turnover because she's actually... Her emails are even getting kicked back.
Really?
Yeah. But she's checking on it, so obviously so is Carol because they're interested in that.
They want their...
They want it to pay. Yep.
So motion to approve the financial statement?
I move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Like Commissioner Adi. All in favor?
Aye. Let's see what we need to do. We need to schedule a public meeting for the KDA Board for Business Subsidy Policy and the Criteria of Application Form to be approved at a public meeting July 11th for the KDA Board. So we need a motion to approve, schedule that public meeting.
Move.
Commissioner Adi?
Second.
Like Commissioner Skoye. Just a formality and it would be pretty much voided after the one the county has approved?
That's correct. It is the same process that we used for the County Board. We... Because that's a separate legal entity, we have to have that same public hearing for the KDA and the KDA Board has to also approve that Business Subsidy Policy. I just wanted to make a note. We have two public hearings that day. One at 9:00 for the liquor ordinance and one at 9... And then I'm going to schedule this for 9:15. We didn't have any public comment before. I doubt that we'll have any public comment with that liquor ordinance, just for the fact that our ordinance is actually voided now because state law supersedes county. We're just keep... There really is no... There shouldn't be any major discussion about the liquor ordinance. So we're cutting it a little bit tight on time, but I just wanted to let you know that in case you wanted to change.
Okay, just kind of referring to the public meeting for County Board that is essentially businesses are following state law and we will follow state law. So they are eligible as of July 2nd to sale on Sunday.
That's correct. From 11 till 6.
And will make formal approval on July 11th after the public meeting.
Yes, we will change our ordinance to match the states.
Okay.
But they can sell liquor though until we change your ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, they can because our...
State law supersedes ours.
Yeah, right.
Ours is just a formality.
And it takes effect this Saturday, July 1st. The first Sunday is July 2nd, so...
But they have to be aware of what the hours are. 11 o'clock and they have to close at 6.
And we are going to draft a letter to all of the off-sale county license holders and explain, you know, that they're good to go, that they're fine and that they can be open.
But it's not mandatory. They do not have to open.
Right. No, it's their choice, so...
Okay, call for a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Let's see, was there any other business coming forward, Board? Got this. This one kind of booped up with my other one. Is there anything else on that, Jen?
Just any other projects or other business?
Reports from members on any other projects ongoing with KDA at the moment?
Listen, I talked to Mike Hansen. He said Berger contacted him and I believe Nathan has talked to him and that San Victor is going to start bringing that bill in place out there. I have not heard any from Berger personally.
Well, fortunately, I guess that was not costing us any money, really.
Yeah.
Hopefully someday we'll make some money. All right, any other reports from members? Public comment for KDA? Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I've got a question here. We're providing money to the Historical Society and I'm ignorant as to how the Historical Society was founded and in particular, why the building is located where it is here. Your vis-a-vis, using a building such as that way it opened that they have down there where the tourists all come by and get possibly some interest there because right now you need a tour guide to get over there if you're not familiar with the city. So does anybody here know any about the history here? Because Warbacher has been there since probably the beginning and I don't know anything about it here, but to me it seems rather odd location to have a Historical Society building. I'm not objecting to the fact that they have a Historical Society or Bronco Nogirtke. Bronco Nogirtke stuff would even today would attract more than history about Coochin County. But, you know, this is not small money here that's going there here and we got effort going on out to Williams and I'm not opposed to that, having a place where people can at least meet here and evidently like to get together. But I like some openness about here, what this is all about here rather than coming in and talking about Indian mounds and all that kind of stuff. Here who really did not provide that much here toward the culture over a period of time and as it exists here today.
Well, Dan, I think your comments are more towards County Board than it is KDA.
I understand, but the money is coming from here, though.
And some of it is, yes.
That's why I'm bringing it up here.
And the only thing I'll say is about the building over on the corner of Fourth Street.
Yeah, who owns that now?
Fourth Street, Second. It is owned by Historical Society.
The who?
Historical Society.
They do own that?
Yes, they do.
Oh.
And that's a question that the administration administrator and I had the other day in discussions about that and we need to see something start happening with that building one way or another.
Oh, yeah.
There's probably some use for it.
The location is terrific here for certain things.
So, and I agree with you and I think the administration and some of the board members agree too that we need to discuss with the Historical Society what they're going to do with that building. If not, there may be another use for it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the public comment? Anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. It's your shift, Commissioner.
I'll bring this meeting of the Coochin County Board of Commissioners to order. First in, we'll do a stamp, the Pledge of Aegis. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is to approve the proposed agenda with additions and I guess we have one, two, three, four additions.
I have no additions, but I will move forward with what's been stated.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Norby. Discussion. Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approve minutes of June 13th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve minutes with the one correction.
The correction was?
Miss Carrie left one person out of the people that were in attendance.
I'll second. What was the correction? Holy French.
Yeah, she left one name that was left out of the people that were in attendance.
On the first page?
Yeah.
Okay. And the only correction was, only French, was left out of the folks in attendance at the last meeting. Got a motion and a second, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion is carried. Ratified June 13th, 2017, Landon Forestry Board Wars.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve both A and B.
Okay, and approve payment of second half budget allocations. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Approve tobacco license renewal.
Chair, I'll move the renewal. Or I think this is just the one for right now.
That's correct.
I'll take this one for Randy Lakewell.
Just for tobacco, right.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Skoye to approve the tobacco license renewal and that the only one for that was Randy Lakewell at this time. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion is carried.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we do. Those are all under board business, right?
They are. A5 is approving the Island View Sewer Project easement on the addition...
We have...
Yeah. Yeah, we did the... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have to do the... Approve the minutes from the emergency meeting last Friday, too.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to approve the minutes from June 16th, emergency meeting of the County Board.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride to approve the minutes from last... Oh, that was Friday, right?
Yep.
Last Friday, June 16th, the emergency meeting regarding the sewer project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Norby. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Landon Forestry Business. Nathan?
Aye.
First item we have here, Nathan, is approve resolution, accepting local jurisdiction over the buffer law.
Yep, so this is a follow-up from our committee of the whole discussion last week regarding a tight deadline from Bowser for counties to either accept or decline the enforcement jurisdiction over the state buffer law. Now, the deadline is June 28th and to get in before that deadline is the goal if we want the funding for, to be provided by the state for this year. And also along with that, per discussion last week, is to identify the Coochin County Soil and Water Conservation District is the point of contact with buffer program within the county.
And we can withdraw from that at any time, right?
Yep, there's, I think it's a six-week notification period.
Okay. Which is the board?
Mr. Chair? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Got a motion by Commissioner Skoye.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Norby. Any discussion? Commissioner McBride?
Nathan, do we know that the money will be coming to the County Board and at that point and then it will be funded probably through soil and water as needed or...
Yeah, so...
Do we know what the money will be?
Yeah, so for 17, we... So the counties or the states set up a floor and a ceiling on the funding, so the floor is $40,000 and then the ceiling is $180,000 for this year and then for 18, the floor is $50,000 and the ceiling is $200,000. So we're at that 40 for this year and 50 for next year. Now, of that money, we will have to... We will likely have to transfer a small portion of that to the Red Lake Water District.
So how does somebody qualify the $200,000?
They have... They had some... Basically, they use a formula based on that buffer map that was completed and then they must have thrown in a factor of public land because if you look at... I mean, we have many miles of public dishes in this county.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Area-wise.
But then when you apply that factor of public land, and I'm assuming that's what they did.
So the public land does not factor into any of the buffer laws?
Well, it does, but I... You know, I'm just assuming here. I'm assuming that this, Bowser, whoever felt, whoever devised this formula, felt that, you know, those lands are not the area of concern. It's the ag lands that are the area of concern.
I understand, but I just find it interesting that...
Yeah.
That even though we're the second largest county, we're going to be paid at the minimum.
Yeah.
And we have probably the second most amount of public lands and there are buffer areas on all these public lands, but it's kind of interesting.
Well, St. Louis County is the same level of funding as Cooch is as well.
Really?
And I was a little surprised, even Lake of the Woods, where you're starting to get into more ag land, they were at that base, that low level of fund, same as us, too. You really have to get out into those far western counties, Kits and Marshall Polk and into the south southwestern part of the state where you start getting more farm up to that ceiling on the funding. May I? I agree with you and it's kind of ironic, I guess.
Any further discussion, Mr. Chair?
At the meeting of MRC, it was a fellow from Bowser was there. A couple of counties asked the question, well, why is it such a hurry? And I said, well, because, you know, this has to be budgeted in for the next, by the 1st of July. And they said, well, what happens if a county doesn't accept their... Well, they said, you don't get any money. And then they said, well, what happens to that money that county doesn't get? And Bowser said, it comes to us. And so they said, well, then that's a known figure, so why does it have to be right now? Because what happens if the county elects to take it and then the city sends and says they don't want it and the guy in Bowser says, well, you have to pay us back. And they said, well, what's the difference if we do it or Bowser does? In other words, why didn't it have to be such a rush to do it when the legislature was going to lot that much money anyhow? So there was a lot of grumbling and complaining together, a lot of the counties about it, all they ran it through, so a little sight on them.
Commissioner, I can't believe there's going to be many counties that would not take the jurisdiction and would let it fall over to Bowser and let those funds go over there. I mean, that may be foolish.
Yeah.
You might as well have some control. If you control the first string, at least you have a little bit, so...
Yeah, that's true. And that was pretty much a different census there, but they just disliked the fact that the meeting was on the... It was announced on the first five days of the month and it had to be done by the end of the month, you know, which a lot of counties were complaining about.
Yeah, at least, like I say, Commissioner McBride, at least we got some say in it.
Yep.
You know, we can complain how we want about how different groups do different things. Well, you know, this way at least we're able to take part in it, so...
Getting back to Commissioner McBride's point about the amount of, just the sheer size and amount of public dishes or titches that we have here and public waters, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
You read between the lines and you can kind of infer that maybe the concern isn't up here right now.
Yeah.
Well, they've determined we're 95% compliant already.
Plus the...
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know for sure because the dust still isn't settled from what happened down in St. Paul, but there, I believe there is, there was proposed funding that if there were, you know, some... If there were instances of non-compliance, at least on private land, that there was some funding available to those private landowners to do those practices to get them into compliance, so...
And they have a... There's a whole list of alternative practices now, so it's fairly easy to be in compliance unless you're farming right up to the edge of something, that'll be a little different,
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Kevin?
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, while we're on the subject of public land, the nation is here. Greatly, very likely understanding of the various types of public land that we have. First of all, we have federal land here and you have binnable input with respect to what happens in that area. Then in the area of state-held land, we have state-held land that's directly there with amenities was given when the patent was originally executed, when the state was created, okay? Then you have a tax-forfeited land, which is managed by the counties generally here. Then you have county land, which is owned outright by the county. And there's some type of land here where school districts are involved here. Beyond that, I don't know, but in all of these areas, what's the exception is the federal because we're in the state. What type of land here is it possible to bring forth as an auction here? For example, if you have county land here that's owned outright by the county, I don't see any provision at all here as long as you comply with the existing law to have an auction here. And an overlay of all of this is more people are starting to realize that those smaller counties here that are quite dependent upon real estate taxes here are taking a second look of all these acquisition programs that are going on here by conservation quotation mark business here because what happens is then it's off the tax rolls. And when you're talking about ecosystem, conservation, it's very difficult to rehearse something here unless you have a total change in this social policy thing. So perhaps you could give me a little bit of insight into this area in the nation because obviously you're a student of it.
Yeah, so you're exactly right. So there's federal land and then there's different categories of state land. There's state-acquired, which they basically hold, you know, outright.
Right.
And then there's state-school trust lands.
Right.
Which are lands owned by the state, but they're dedicated to the statewide school trust, so they're meant to be in.
It was part of the 40 proposition. It was not, there's 640 acres, but part of that 640 was dedicated to...
Yes, certain sections in each township are supposed to be dedicated to that school trust.
Okay.
And then there's tax-forfeited land, which are... The state technically owns the title to, but like you mentioned, the county manages those lands and we fall under the management of those tax-forfeited lands. There's a whole set of state statutes that govern the management of those. Now, you know, talking about real estate property taxes and selling land where the beauty of the state tax-forfeited lands is, you know, we can sell products, i.e. mostly timber products.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a portion back into...
Oh, okay.
Those local taxes.
Well, you can't do that.
Yeah.
All right. How about mineral rights, are those two?
That is, the state owns the mineral rights on those tax-forfeited lands, so...
Because if they... If the land goes tax-forfeited, then it reverts back to the state, as I understand it.
Mineral rights, yeah.
Okay, unless it's sold prior to reversion.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
We could vote it.
I'd agree to vote it.
Yeah, we'd vote it, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, but then you're keeping me out.
Yeah.
Some things are good in this place.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay, and we've got a notice of temp hire. Erin Russo, I believe, right?
Yep, she has been hired. She started yesterday, actually, as a temp hire in the surveyors department. She's helping with an ongoing project to try to transfer a lot of the old papers, land and survey records over to electronic format, so...
Okay, and that's just a notice?
Yep.
Okay, should do it for you.
All right.
Next, Nathan.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the As here for a little bit, five and six. Approve Island View Sewer Project easement acquisition policy.
And Mr. Chair, Dale Olson called me and asked if I would just go through this with the board as he went home with a pounding headache, he said. So I think this is basically the same as it was for Jackfish. We are trying to get the easements to be homeowners who take them for $1 to keep project costs down. They talked about that at that public hearing. There was no opposition. I think there's a pretty good group of, pretty exciting group of people that are going against the sewer, so I didn't hear any opposition to any of that. And then just a resolution to... And then just a resolution to portion, do that a special.
Okay, which is the board on that?
I moved to approve the solar project easement policy.
Got a motion by Commissioner Norby. Second? Second by Commissioner McBride. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And A6 is approved highway department, public information meeting at Birchdale Community Building on June 29th, 2017 at 7:00 PM for road maintenance and. Great Northern Transmission.
Mr. Chair, that's as of board activity.
Yep.
I guess I lost.
Okay, and.
I talked to Joe today and he did say that someone's going to be there from, from Great Northern. Because there has been questions out there, like people that, you know, they kind of tore the roads up and who's paying to make them? And, you know, all sorts.
Someone from Minnesota Power?
No, 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 I mean, I mean, the residents were, were questioning who was going to pay it. And, and so Bill got ahold of someone from Minnesota Power that's going to be there at that meeting.
Okay.
Did he, did he move it?
Nobody did.
Did you move the special meeting? Or is it approved board?
I need a motion to make a board activity.
Prove, I mean, move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Skoye, second by Commissioner McBride. Discussion, Commissioner McBride.
Yesterday at the KDA, KEDA meeting, Commissioner Hanson, of course, is a public member of that board. And interestingly, he said that like the Sam's Mark Trail, I don't know, what is it, 12, 14 miles long? I don't know what it is. He said it's in the greatest shape it's ever been. So maybe there's some secondary roads or some forest roads that are getting beat up a little bit. But, you know, our, our main county roads are being well-maintained.
Yeah, yeah, I've gotten to the engineer or something that, that they did a great bit of work on. I haven't been out to look at it.
Well, that'd be, that'd be good to go to, meet up people, see if they're, I agree.
Oh, because I've, I've had multiple, multiple calls on that, on that issue.
Yeah, our last ConCon meeting, we had some discussion on that, so.
And then the, also the issue of pulling graders out of garages has been, has been the other topic. That's, that, that's what precipitated the whole thing.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, any public comment for regular board meeting? Hearing that all in favor?
The juror?
I moved to the juror.
I'll second Commissioner Norby.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Norby, second by Commissioner Skoye.
Good deal.
Not all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Then there was one other type of land, and that's ConCon.
Right.
ConCon lands. That was one other one that Nathan didn't, didn't talk about.
I don't know what that means.
The consolidation conservation lands.
Oh, consolidating conservation.
Those are, those are state lands, aren't they, Commissioner?
Yeah, they are. They're, they're state lands and it was the same thing when a county bonded, put those ditches in. And they were going to go bankrupt, the state bailed them out. And that was part of that Con.
And you weigh that on a ditch crop? That's what's going on?
Yeah, yeah.
When did the county bankrupt, 1920?
Well, my dad was involved in that, uh, here. Oh, that's what they call that, huh?
Yep. And we received, we received pilt on those lands at a little higher rate than, because ConCons paid a little higher rate, isn't that the question?
Oh.
Depends what the quality of the land is.
No, I think, I think.
Were you telling me that there's separate rules that apply to that land and?
Oh, absolutely. Uses, absolutely, there's different, they're very restricted. And I couldn't tell you what they are, but they are restricted.
Very restricted geographically.
Oh, yeah.
But the county can sell timber and gravel off the lands. They just have to share the money with the state to the school district.
Okay.
All right.
Last motion to chairman.
We need to still see those ditch plots, ditches up in the air.
We can. I know.
Yeah, they're going to drain the whole county and make it a farming community.
Everybody was dreaming in twenties.
They're probably growing twenties. And actually, Bell County got a lot of.
You guys come on up, come on.
Bell County has a lot up there.
You want to come up too?
So those, those all and.
Come on up, guys.
But these don't have.
We've got three shirts.
Yes, so you, so the, so the market's a lot of different. It's, it's, you hear it, I don't know if it's a county here. We're here, it comes to us and then we have to allow it.
Yes, we have to, so I can defer mine.
That would be, that would be my scanner.
Oh, my God.
My scanner in my locker, my law, we have to be there at 6:00.
We'll go quick, we can, we can move right through it.
We have, we have, we can be in right at 6:00.
Okay, highway department discussion on 2017 equipment purchase plan.
You wanted to weigh in on the budget?
Yeah, for time purposes, let's get this, this is more important than the budget review stuff, so.
Okay.
Because we're just really looking at the list.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and take it.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so the first thing, I wonder if we could look at this 11 by 17 two pager? I'm sorry, let me figure it out. Oh, you got one? So this, this two pager tries to walk through, sort of a linear fashion by dollars, what we would like to do with our equipment budget for this year. And we know that we came to the board previously to get permission to advertise for bids for tandem trucks. We thought maybe this would be helpful to look at a, an overall view of the heavy equipment purchase plan. And so, I'm sorry for the text size, it just doesn't seem like it wants to get any bigger at this size of paper. But the way this thing is set up, at the very top and upper left, we show that we started with a $230,000 budget. So the, the red is, red is revenue here. And then as we go down the page, we start with expenditures and then we keep a running total or a running balance of what's left. So we would say we had $230,000 to start. We had a $54,000 expenditure, that's the first item on the list. That was the, that was one of our debt service payments on a lease to own for a motor grader. And that's 2015 motor grader. So we show the math here, the $230,000 reduced by $54,000 leaves $176,000 in the balance. Then we go on, we had a $5,000 expenditure for some minor shop items. We had an $1,800 expenditure for a used pickup truck that we transferred from lands in forestry. After that $1,800 expenditure, we left with $169,000. That's where we get into the contemporary information. We show with this request, a budget of about $46,000 or an expenditure amount of about $46,000 for a purchase on the sort of a purchase-to-home scenario on a tandem axle truck. And we show a $10,000 credit there as a trade-in allocation for a 1995 tandem that we have. So we're saying here that we think that that lease-to-own payment is $46,000, offset $10,000 on a trade-in. So you get $36,000 on that lease to own for one tandem. So the balance goes from 169 now to 132. We take that one step further, because we hope to buy two tandem plow trucks this year. In that scenario, we don't have a second trade-in because we are short one truck. So we have 132,000 minus 46,000, puts our balance at $86,000. So we would say after the purchase of two trucks on a lease-to-own scenario, we have 86,000 left. And that's when we ask to turn the page. This is again continuation of what we would like to do this year. So you see the expenditure at the top of this page is related to a motor grader. And we show, again, we roll that $86,000 balance from the bottom of the previous page. We show an expenditure here of $89,000. And this, this is a scenario that we wanted to talk to you about to see what the board thought about this. This scenario, I'm not sure if the colors show up, but we show making up the $89,000 in two ways. We have a $45,000 trade-in allocation. So we have an older motor grader that's in the Loma Chata now, we'd like to trade in that motor grader to help offset this purchase. We also are asking in this scenario to pull 44,000 out of the Minnesota Power maintenance for Phase A. And that was the 830,000, and we can talk about those details. But could we pull 44,000 out of the Minnesota Power Phase A maintenance allocation? And so together, the 45,000 for the trade-in, the 44,000 from the Minnesota Power maintenance fund allocation covers the 89,000 on a three-year lease, lease to own for the motor grader. So that's, that's sort of a key element of this, of this plan. If the board is okay with pulling 44,000 out of that Minnesota Power maintenance fund, then this scenario holds up. The next item we have down here is the purchase of a maintenance truck, sorry, a truck for the maintenance supervisor. When, when we brought in the Mispa shop, we transferred the maintenance supervisor's truck down to Mispa because at the time we didn't have a maintenance supervisor. Since then, Mispa and Big Falls have traded trucks, but nonetheless, it left us short of a pickup. So we're asking here to buy a pickup off the state bid. We have a $23,000 500 allocation for the pickup. We have a trade-in for an older pickup, so it's about a $22,000 out of pocket. So we take 22,000 off the 86,000 from it, but we have 63,000 left. The next item gets into purchase of a, of a roadside mowing rig. This would be a farm-type tractor and a, and a cutting deck. And this scenario is another item we wanted to talk to the board about. Last year in the fall, we budgeted $40,000 for our noxious weed program. And in previous years, I think we had budgeted incrementally maybe 10, then up to 20, and then up to 40. Because last summer, there was a lot of, a lot of concern about noxious weeds, wild parsnip and so on. Well, we bought a bunch of chemicals and we still have chemicals left over from last year. And we're also tackling a lot of the noxious weed issues with roadside mowing. And actually, we mowed some spray bars on ATVs, we have skid steers, we have tractors. We kind of have a three-pronged approach, plus chemicals. So what we're asking is if we could transfer 32,000 of that 40,000 into heavy equipment. And we use part of that, that $32,000 goes to subsidize part of a $55,000 tractor's purchase. So again, we think that transferring 32,000 out of noxious weeds, because we would use this tractor in great part to combat noxious weeds, roadside mowing. We would leave 8,000 in the noxious weed to buy chemicals as we need them. We take 32, move it to heavy equipment. We take 32 combined with 20 from our heavy equipment fund, so we cover the cost of a $55,000 used tractor. So this is a tractor with a deck on it for, really for roadside mowing, which is in great part for noxious weeds. So if we use that math, our $55,000 expenditure is offset by a $32,000 transfer. We're left with $40,000 here to keep going.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
And the noxious weed thing, was that contracted out or was the county forces doing that?
It's, it's us, the only thing we do, we bought the chemicals, but.
So you're doing.
We had, last year we bought a couple of ATVs from lands in forestry. We teamed up, we have a tank-mounted rig on a flatbed. We have, we have equipment that mounts on skid steers, equipment that mounts on tractors. We can spray some chemicals in a couple of different ways, so that's how we've been tackling noxious weeds.
So you're still getting someone to run the tractor? It's not, you know, that's kind of where I was going.
Oh, I see, I see, gotcha. Yeah, well, so Brad has some heavy equipment operators from around. We have a full-time, part-time guy. We don't use the summer help to do that, but we do have a seasonal, full-time part-time guy.
Excuse me, Joe, is that, is that amount of money left in noxious weeds going to be able to handle the cost of the spraying?
Yes, I think.
Yeah, I got, I probably have $8,000 chemicals from last year again.
Okay, okay, because they really spread last year, you know, so.
We're, we're, we should be, have everything mowed once by the 4th of July this year.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, we're way ahead on mowing this year, way ahead.
And it sounds like on the parsnip particular, once it's mowed and it's coming back, it's, it's more susceptible to the, to the chemical application.
And then with spot spraying, you can get a lot more coverage.
Yes, you can, so.
Sorry, we're kind of slowing down your momentum.
No, it's okay, you know, in years, it's a good point, though. In years past, there, there were some roads that may have only been roadside mowed one time. So Brad's on a program to do two and three times a year. So an early summer and then the fall, as time allows. So we're trying to use the roadside mowing as a way to knock down those, those weeds.
Well, if you can, if you can get on it before the seeds have set, it's going to be because, you know, so biperennial plant or plant or whatever they call it, you know, so it's.
Sure.
It takes a couple of years to chill it off, but we're still doing it.
Sure.
Didn't we, didn't we buy a new tractor in the last year or two with side mower?
No.
Okay.
No.
Nothing so bad in here.
No.
Is this the back wing type mower or what type mower is it?
Some of them have side decks, some have rear decks.
This one has a side deck, a wider side deck so we can get farther down in the ditch. And then on the tree point, so it's, it'll, like, if you get in a bigger road, you'll be cutting, I don't know, with the 72 and a 60 on the rear, so you'll be digging for a good swath.
Okay.
Because I, I know last fall, I looked and there were some places that they could have made one more pass, they had cut it off. You know, but there is a, you know, a little bit left, but.
We're making two passes now, you know, where we can and making a point to mow the weeds. I mean, if there's weeds to take, take time and get it by.
So then, if that works, we have 40,000 left to, just a couple more items. The next item is an upgrade of a 2005 plow truck. We've talked at previous board meetings about trying to get our plow trucks upgraded to have underbelly plows and brine tanks for a variety of reasons. So this, this item looks at a $25,000 expenditure to upgrade a 2005 truck to have underbelly plows and, and the brine tanks. And we show that that truck could land in Birchdale or International Falls, depending on, I guess, which one needs it most. And so we have a 2005 Sterling that's in Little Fork right now. Little Fork is slated to get one of the new trucks. We would then, if we do get a new truck for this plan, then we take this 2005 out of Little Fork and retrofit it. And again, it could land in Birchdale or the Falls. So we did some calling around to some truck, some truck outfitters and we think that's the kind of price that would take to upgrade our used tandem plow truck. I think there's only a couple of items left here. We have, we have two routes that are particularly tough. One is a, one is a Rainier route where we use a front-end loader. It's got a front blade and it's got a side wing. We also have the Lakes route, which are really tough. Historically, the, the guys have been plowing those with, with front-end loaders, blades and front blades on the side. We're looking at, based on what might happen with Mendad and some of our truck routes, we're looking at maybe substituting in a, a single axle truck that could have a sander as well as a front blade and a wing on it in place of a loader. And the advantage of that is the loaders are very versatile to get around on the, on the squarely roads and stuff out by the lake. But the, the plowing operation to do with the loader then has to be followed up with a separate operation for sanding. The loaders don't have any sanding capabilities. So this is an upgrade of a single axle truck that we have. Can we upgrade that truck to have, to have a side wing on it? Right now, our sanders are only sander equipped, they don't have a front plow or a side plow. So take an existing sander truck, it's a single axle, a little, a little bit easier to get around. Upgrade that with the front and a side. And that shows $13,000 cost, getting us down to $2,000 in the balance. The last item here is a $10,000 road reclaimer. You've maybe seen what we've been doing with the rental item out in the, in the Birchdale area. We, Brad's rented a specialized piece of equipment. It's a six-foot wide kind of a drum with big teeth on it, rinds up the grass and what's on the edge of the road. Sort of reinvigorates the road, widens the road surface. It's part of the precursor to blading and crowding and bringing more gravel, really kind of upgrade all the gravel roads. And it also works for gravel shoulders. This is an area where we would like to, again, ask if we could take 10,000 out of the Minnesota Power maintenance fund because we would use this piece of equipment in great part in that area for those reasons. And if that's the case, the $10,000 expenditure is offset by a $10,000 transfer from the Minnesota Power maintenance fund. So we end up with 2,300 balance in the fund after this plan is implemented. So there's a couple of key things, the use of the Minnesota Power maintenance fundy and transfer from the noxious weed fund to the heavy equipment fund. Those are the two things we really kind of wanted to see if you were okay with that plan.
So Joe, what's the $12 amount that you proposing to take from the Minnesota Power? That's an $800,000 bill, right, from Minnesota Power? That's an $800,000 bill, right, from Minnesota Power?
That's right. The last page in here, but it's a perfect question. We had, the last page in here is, I think, one page, eight and a half by eleven, and it gives an overview of the Minnesota Power, focusing specifically on Phase A. But the $836,000 was the Phase A number. We got 80% upfront. That's the 669. So, we show four expenditures going against that in this scenario. $250,000 roughly for the crushing. You've already heard about that one. Lease-to-own on the motor grader, $44,000. So, again, we have running balance of $375,000. Road reclaimer for $10,000 expenditure, running balance of $365,000. Legal fees for the MOU, $2,000. So, we'd be at $362 out of the 836 total. So, with this heavy equipment side of it, $54,000 out of 836 total or $54,000 out of the 669 that we've already received.
So, what was the total again that would be left?
Oh, I'm sorry. If we did 836, we have 362 in this scenario.
362 in ILOA?
362, yeah.
And then that is left for how long?
That's for Phase A, which really kind of gets us through August of this year, maybe August, September, depending on their schedule. As soon as we get this front-end work done, we jump into Phase B. Phase B is a million and a half, spread out over three years, roughly 500 each of three years. Phase B, we think, starts in about September of this year, depending on when Minnesota Power gets going.
And those, that million and a half is into the MOU?
Yes. It's divvied up, it's a million and a half for 2017, 18, and 19. Phase C gets us into 2019 or '20 when it wraps up. So, a million and a half for Phase B, about half a million each of the three years.
So, Joe, just, if I can, Mr. Chair, just, on the two tandem axle trucks, those are, and I guess we need to talk to the grader, but two tandem axle trucks you're talking about, lease-to-own, the five years, they're coming in about $233,000 a truck.
Exactly right.
I mean, that's probably a little over what the direct purchase price would be.
That's right.
Quite a bit over?
I think it's about $11,000 or $12,000 in interest. It's about 2.5% interest over five years. I think it's about $12,000.
So, the two trucks, we're even saying $25,000 over the five years?
I think it was like 23 grand for the two trucks, I think, was kind of what the lease-to-own looked like. Yeah, the trucks, you know, they're so expensive. They're $220,000. It would wipe out the budget to buy the truck. So, we know that there's the disadvantage with lease-to-own and interest, but it does allow us to get two trucks into the system at prices we think we can afford.
And then you said there was, was there a grader in there too?
Yes, the grader's on the top of the second page. So, we want to upgrade an 80s.
We already have one, right? We're about a lease-to-own.
Yes, we do. It's a 2015 John Deere we bought on the state bid. And it's about $55,000 a year. Interest adds up to, it's the same thing. It's like $11,000 or $12,000, I think, over five years. It's a 2% to 2.5% interest rate. So, this scenario, thank you for bringing it up, though. I don't know if I glossed over it. We tried to do a three-year lease-to-own on this motor grader. We tried to pair it up to the three-year term of the Minnesota Power job. So, the idea is we use the Minnesota Power money. At the end of the three-year term, we've used the grader for the Minnesota Power job. At the end of the three-year term, we own the grader if we have our allowing us to use the Minnesota Power funds.
I guess the only I'm looking at is, you know, when you budget for '17, budget for '18, '19 going forward, when you start using your budgeting for capital purchases, we'd have to add in these leases as part of that, into that budget for 2018, 2019. I mean.
You're exactly right.
It has to come up.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it just kind of gets lost and.
That's right. It's a good point because we're sort of making fixed costs for the next couple of years. The one motor grader, which is the 2015, is the 55 grand. Those two trucks are about 90. So, about $150,000 is kind of, we're saying we're going to be getting that, at least that much for heavy equipment for the next few years.
So, one more, Mr. Chair. So, if you budgeted $233,000 for capital for '17, now by going with lease-to-own or whatever you want to call it, you had all that up, does that keep you within, what, that $230,000 for the year?
This scenario does. This scenario, if our numbers are all good, we've done research, we're kind of really tight, but we think we're a couple thousand dollars left.
Wow. But you can all, but you used some Great Northern funds and all that to subsidize.
That's right. That's right.
But it's still keeping you within that $230,000 that you budgeted this year.
Right. And some of the key items are, we transferred from the weed fund. We use some of the Minnesota Power money to subsidize the grader, and we use some Minnesota Power money for that reclaimer. Those are the key items to make that work.
So, is there add-ins here from what you originally, I mean, the grader? We know we talked about the trucks, but now is the grader an add-in now?
Did we discuss the grader last fall?
I don't know if we discussed. I don't remember. Mr. Chair, you remember another grader discussion? I don't remember that being in there.
I don't.
And then, and then you said a pickup. I mean, there's some additions that were not in the '17 budget, correct?
I honestly don't remember on the motor grader.
I think they were in, were they, Joe?
You know what? I would not.
Or did we just have a dollar? We didn't have specific.
I have a dollar amount and on the.
No specific items.
Yeah. And on the budget sheet that I'm looking for, that Teresa had for their department budget, it says C attached list. I asked Joe for the list, and I have not received that yet, about, so what she had planned for on budgets last year. There's a couple of other things that, there was another capital expenditure. It says it was put in the account of less than $10,000, which was, it was supposed to. There was $9,000 that was spent on capital expenditures, and that, there was no budget item for that or for equipment and furniture, so that $9,750 should also be taken out of that rolling budget.
I think one of them was, I think he's addressed one of them in here.
Yeah. I think the, I believe it's.
The buyer was in this equipment.
Yep. I think it's the $5,000 item, and I wondered if the, if Nathan's truck was also in that.
Nathan's truck, I do not believe is in there, so I think we still need to add. Did anybody do a tally?
There was a journal.
Was there done a journal entry? So, Nathan's truck probably is in that $9,000.
Right.
Amount.
I don't remember.
And then there was $739. So, we take $9,000, $739. And then you think the $1,800 is in there. The difference is about $8,000, my figures to Joe's. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that there is $40,000 in the budget for weed brush spray. However, under that same maintenance budget, there is nothing budgeted for gas, diesel, and other fuels. And year-to-date, we've had $22,000. So, we don't really have that $40,000 necessarily.
But if you, if I can, over here.
We do, but we do, go ahead.
If you look at the revenue guideline report, an expenditure guideline report, you will see the bottom numbers, and we're within, I think, our revenue, we're at 22% of what we budgeted, or the other way around. And the revenue is 44%. So, if you look at those two guideline reports, the overall figure, and that, where you're seeing some of those is Donna's Little World does not interface appropriately to IFS. But if you look at the bottom line, dollar for dollar, it's going to be there. It's just in the wrong category. But if you look at those expenditure guideline reports.
Within the maintenance budget or within the overall construction maintenance shop?
If you look at overall, because those, there's issues between the maintenance account, the construction account, even the administration account. Things were, things that we have budgeted were not either used or were overused or that I think is going to kind of need to be rehauled, overhauled when we come to look at our transfer rates.
It could be that there's some, part of what Len is getting at, I think, that there could be some transfers where some items have not been maybe charged to the proper category, or maybe there's some unbalance in some of our budgeted items. But we believe that we can make the transfers to live within those items. We did just do a double check before we came. There is still $40,000 in that weed fund.
Yes.
So, there's maybe some, there's maybe some transfers that we have to do to kind of clean up. Maybe we're over in some categories and under in others. We think it's maybe just not us maybe getting our bills loaded properly and so on. So, we have some work to do there, that's for sure.
Yeah. That's, it's just really hard because, you know, if we look at even just the maintenance, you're over in several categories right now, not just the gas, diesel, and other fuels. As were you last year too. So, it's just, I just want to be cautious that we don't overspend until we really get some final numbers in. It's really hard to figure out income and expenses in the highway department because sometimes the projects go longer than a year. So, you know, we use the calendar year. We're on a cash basis. It's very challenging for your department to budget, you know, on an annual basis. So, I just think that we need to be cautious. We also talked about some of those fund balances being low, and I would prefer to save that money for, from the Great Northern Transmission Line until it all washes out to see really what, in fact, is left, you know, from those expenses. But that's a discussion we can, you know, continue.
Mr. Chair, just a minute. For time purposes. Joe, we did give you permission to seek bids on two trucks, correct?
Right.
And I discussed myself. I would rather have some time to digest the rest of this, and I think it's fair for the board and for all of us to sit down and have this discussion again and, again, the commission pathway. I think you guys have very creative ideas how to make this work, but we need to discuss a little bit more. But we, I mean, I don't think we're in a rush right in the next couple of weeks to start searching, are we?
A couple of issues that, we'll come back to for a separate issue on the trucks. The tractor for the roadside mowing would be something that would.
That's, well, yeah. If we're going to do anything with noxious weeds, something we have to look at doing while it's in season. Doesn't do good in January.
Yeah. Yeah. But we could come to you for a separate request on the, take quotes on the tractor, you know. We just really wanted to kind of give you a feel for the overarching plan to see if you were in agreement on some of these key items.
It's interesting. I think there might be some room there. I'm just, I'll bring it, but I got to look at it a little bit more. I don't know what the commission feel about as far as the tractors. I mean, if we needed something with that, we're interested in, I know we all get calls on noxious weeds.
Yeah.
And we can't control it, and we can't, we can't back up our arguments that we are controlling if we don't have the proper. But that's where I'm at.
Yeah. And so Brad's done some checking, trying to find a good used tractor that has a used deck on it as a way to, sort of a cost-effective way to get into some additional roadside mowing.
I'm not big on this stuff. We're buying somebody else's problems.
One of the other items we just wanted to chat with you about briefly was the sale of surplus equipment. We have, we, last fall, we brought you a list of equipment. We are taking steps to find the best way to sell that, auction, online, combination, et cetera. The list is about $100,000 worth of value, we believe. Our key question to the board is, it's our understanding in talking to specifically Doug Prindl and Donna about historically, Doug would say for at least the last 30 years, that when the highway department sells surplus equipment, the revenue from that sale comes back into the highway department. And we wanted to confirm that that is still consistent with how the board feels. And moving forward, can we assume that, as has happened in the past, that we can take the proceeds from the sale and use them for highway department equipment purchases?
I mean, to me, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't think that if Nathan was going to make some sales, that you're going to go over and ask for that money. I mean, this is your department, and your equipment's been paid for out of your budgets, and that's where I'm at. I don't know whether the commission.
It does make sense, and, you know, historically, I think they've had things from other departments and that also at. That's right. At public auctions anyhow. Yeah. And I don't know how they divvied that up before. Doug said he divvied up the auctioneer. Doug, I always liked the auctioneer method. Doug said that they, I assume each department got the revenues from what they sold, and Doug said they divided up the auctioneer's fees amongst the departments.
So, like, if they had Lot A and Forest Lake, they'd have Lot B and that type of.
Sure.
Yeah. I guess one question, because I don't know any better, is the money that we're going to get from the Great Northern Transmission Line, is that money really was used to upgrade roads and to fix damages that was caused? It wasn't necessarily a profit margin from the county, so maybe we don't have that money to spend? Does that make sense?
So, the way we broke it out for Phase A, B, and C, we developed spreadsheets that covered anticipated materials costs, equipment time, staff labor, contracted labor, that kind of thing. So, we have a bunch of those rows and columns that kind of rolled up to those dollar values. You could talk about the hourly rate, let's say, for a motor grader or the hourly rate for the person or some of those kinds of things. There could be some discretion there, but that's how we rolled it up.
Up to this now.
We're going to have to go and get it started for the board acquisition.
I mean, actually, to give you permission to seek bids on the tractor, maybe we have to add it forward.
Sure. That's fine.
And we're not session telling, telling I have others.
Got it. That's my fault, too.
That's our, you said, I mean, I think you can get something.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.